Morning, welcome to the September 2 Ellis County Commission Meeting. I'll call the meeting in order, all those capable please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To develop for which it stands one nation under God indivisible.
Bobby, would you do the roll call?
Commissioner Neil Younger.
Present.
Chair Michael Burgess.
Here.
Commissioner Nathan Liker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
There's one change to the order of business, we'll be striking item eight. The water well agreement and easement to a later date. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Prior minutes, any changes or modifications needed?
They look good.
Consent agenda.
I will move to approve consent agenda items A through G.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on consent agenda item, discussion on the items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passes three zero. Issues from persons not on the order of business, any public comments to the commission at this time? None, we'll go into the agenda, then first item, risk management award. We have Mr. Patrick Smith here from K Camp.
Good morning and thank you for having me. My name is Patrick Smith, I am the risk manager at K Camp. We like to personally recognize all of our members that meet the criteria for our risk management achievement award. And Ellis County, once again, is one of those members. Some of the criteria for our risk management achievement award is having a risk management committee that meets on a quarterly basis. Conducting facility inspections, roof inspections, jail audits, providing training for your staff to prevent or reduce risk, the risk of property loss and liability. We know we can't prevent all property loss and liability related claims, but we do appreciate the steps that Ellis County and the risk management committee has taken to reduce the risk of property loss and liabilities that are normally reported to K Camp. So, we would like to present this check in the amount of $4,766.29 for your continued membership with K Camp and your efforts in minimizing the cost coverage for your county. We appreciate your due diligence and all the staff that help organize the meetings, training, and inspections in order to receive this award. You guys have any questions for me?
Is there different tiers of this risk management award or this award process? Are there different tiers, are we at the top or are we somewhere in the middle?
So, yeah, there's the criteria right there and then there's like first set of criteria, you get one to three percent. And then there's a second tier of criteria that is four to six percent. I will say that you guys actually did better than what the award amount indicates. It's just that we're getting more of our members that are participating in our risk management achievement award and all the awards went over our budget. So, I had to actually prorate everyone's award in order to fit our budget. So, hopefully we'll get a bigger budget next year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the hard work that our staff does to do this, but I appreciate K Camp because of your willingness to come out, I don't, hopefully you got a few other things, you know, you came from Topeka.
I got a few other stops that I've made, so.
Coming out in person, coming out in person, I think means a lot for your services instead of just making a change. We could have accepted it that way, but thank you for your efforts.
You can come back anytime as long as you're ready.
I'll be here.
You want a picture or anything?
Oh, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Serial malt beverage license change. Clerk Bobby?
County Clerk Bobby Droling, I'm going to let my staff, Tura Clement and Brenda Hoffman, present the changes that we just received from the state of Kansas on how to apply for a serial malt beverage license. They sat in on the Zoom meeting and learned all the new process, plus they do them, so I thought they were better off to do the explanation.
Tura Clement with Ellis County Clerk's Office Administrative Assistant.
Brenda Hoffman, Ellis County Clerk's Office Administrative Assistant.
Previously applicants would apply for the CMB stamp and license through the clerk's office. Effective September 1, ABC revised the process in accordance with KSA 41-2702. Applicants will now obtain and complete the application along with sending in $25 CMB stamp fee and submit it directly to ABC instead of going through the clerk's office. ABC will mail the application and the state CMB stamps back to the applicant. The applicant will then take the approved application and the state CMB stamp to the clerk's office to apply for the CMB retail license. The process will follow the same procedures as before with the applicant applying for their license through the clerk's office. So, the, that was the only change that took place with the CMB license and stamps.
So, will people still come to your office to file this or do this?
They'll go directly to the state office first and then come to us with their stamps and we'll do all our process after that.
Okay. And for questions, we can refer folks to your office.
Yep, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reinvest my housing incentive district presentation, and Doug Williams here to give us an update.
Good morning Commissioners, Doug Williams, Executive Director of Grow Hays. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes on your agenda today to talk about the Tallgrass Edition and kind of what's going on out there. I guess you're going to roll me Darren.
Yeah, we're having a PowerPoint going, so bear with me on getting it going like that.
Next one if you could. About two or three weeks ago, the final six holes were dug for the final six houses in the Tallgrass Edition. This is Heart of America's project that they started some time back. And I want you to keep one number in mind, $127. Remember that one because I'm going to refer back to it here in a little bit. So, the Tallgrass, the project was started, Heart of America purchased the land back in 1223 of 2019. The initial RHID was approved by the city of Hayes, which is how the process works, on June 7 of 2020. There's a 30-day veto period in which time the school district or the county has an opportunity to veto the project. That did not occur and so the project went forward. Infrastructure took a little bit longer to complete than we had hoped, really a year. And we had hoped that it would be faster than that, but the first houses were started in November of 2021. First house was finished in April of 2022. It was developed in three phases, phase one was 36 homes, phase two was 18 homes, phase three was 12 homes. The first 36 homes were, had a maximum sales price of $225,000. The next 18, due to some price increases and that kind of thing, had a total sales price, maximum sales price of 235. And then the final 12, because they're larger lots and there was a demand in the marketplace for a little bit different price point. Maximum price was 325. The infrastructure costs were $3,150,000. You look at, this is kind of a development 101 in a quick slide here. Phase one cost a million, two, 36 lots, about $35,000 per lot. Heart of America sold them for $10,000 each. Phase two, the cost went up to $44,000 a lot. That's why the price went up to 235 on the maximum sales price because the lots were sold for $15,000. That was right post COVID and prices were a little bit crazy at that point in time. Phase three, which I want to talk just a second about, the average price per lot was $89,860. If you think about that, no private developer would ever develop lots for $89,860 and sell them for $25,000, no matter how much money they were getting back on an RHID. That's one of the benefits of having Heart of America do this, a not-for-profit developer. They know we need the housing, they went in, they made the investment. They knew that it was going to cost a lot more per lot, but they found out early on that they thought they could overlay the street, but when they got started, they found out that the substructure was not sufficient to do an overlay. So, they opted to, even though they could have gone ahead with an overlay, that may not have had a very good life. They opted to spend another $180,000 to improve that street to a new street and raise their costs that much. It saved the city probably, I don't know, $250,000 to $500,000 because it's city street. The city would have had to have done something with it at some point in time. So, they saved some dollars there, they provided a new gateway into the Fort Hayes Tech campus and provided spots for 12 more houses. But you can see, their average cost per lot was $47,738 in the development. Their average sale price per lot was $14,000. Had three builders participate, originally we put it out and said any builders that wanted to participate to come forward. There were some criteria, they had to build at least four houses within 18 months. Four came forward initially, only three ended up building homes. And those were Homes by Cornerstone, which is Kelly Kinky, Platinum Builders, which is Adam Prey and David Spady, and Paul Wurtenberger, PWC Construction. Terms of the development demographics, there, we know where they came from now with all 66 having been sold because every home was sold before it was done. There were 27 first-time home buyers, 17 buyers that were new to Hayes, 15 either upsized or downsized, and that'll get important in a minute, and six were sold to investors. Let's talk about the economic impact of a development like this because we get, you guys just went through the budget process. You catch heat every year when that happens about your reckless spending and that type of thing, which we know is not the case. But you get some heat on that and anytime you talk about incentives, everybody gets their hackles up because they think it's costing them tax dollars. So, and I think everybody here knows how an RHID works. You defer property taxes, a portion of them, for a period of time until the developer gets the dollars back. In exchange for that, the homeowners don't have to pay special assessments and the project can come in at a lower cost to the homeowner than it does, than it would otherwise if it was a benefit district. You use multiples from the National Association of Home Builders. Earlier I showed that slide that the total economic impact or investment was $19,380,000. You use a 1.26 multiplier, that means that there's a 24,000, 24,400,000 economic impact to our community. You look at sales tax, which is a significant issue, not only for, well, basically for each organization, each taxing entity in Ellis County, as well as the state of Kansas. Typically, material costs represent 50 to 60% of the cost of construction. I use 50% here, these would be the sales tax that would have been generated from those 66 homes as they were built. Obviously, the largest piece goes to the state of Kansas, but the city, county, and school district all participated in that revenue stream as well. Talk about property tax, while the majority of the property tax is deferred, abated until the developer gets their dollars back, there's still property tax that is paid, the state still gets their 1.5 mils and the state still levies 20 mils for the schools. So, over the life of the project until such time as the RHID is paid out, in essence, developer gets their money back. This is roughly how much the state of Kansas will see, receive in either the 1.5 mil levy or the school fund levy of almost a million dollars. Talk about jobs, using statistics from the National Association of Home Builders again. Each home generates, sustains about 1.76 jobs. Take that times 66, you've got 116 jobs were sustained in Ellis County. Indirect jobs, that would be suppliers like Home Depot or Heartland Building Center or those type of things, about 40 jobs. And then the ripple effect is about 104 jobs, that's things that go on. Whoever delivered the materials, some people that moved there, go to restaurants and eat and that kind of thing, just the ripple effect of economic activity. So, a total of 260 jobs sustained from this project. Ongoing during the RHID payback, they estimate roughly about $2,778,000 a year in economic impact to the community, after it's paid back about $3.3 million. I think all that, you know, I always, I'm always a skeptic of statistics like that. I always wonder, you know, how do they really know? But I think if you look at, this is just a partial list of all the contractors and people who participated in the construction, the financing, the appraising, all the people that participated in that project. And you start to get a sense of how impactful it really is to a community. That's a lot of people, as I said, it's not all. I just went back to the contractors and I said, who are the ones that you think of that did this or did that? Who are the HVAC contractors, electrical contractors, concrete companies, you know, on and on and on. It's a pretty long list of people who have participated and continue to participate in that, you know. There, there's still people going out there and landscaping yards and that kind of thing because they're not all done. And so, big list of people and I think that really shows the impact that a project like this has on a community. Talk a little bit about those demographics again. That upsize-downsize, we have had a tight real estate market for the last seven or eight years. And those upsizers or downsizers, they all sold homes. They either went down or they moved up, and I've got a picture of a couple here. This is the first house really that sold in a development. And this guy sold this house. This guy downsized from this house. And these people bought that house, and these people bought that house. This guy moved out of this house and these people bought that house. These pictures are a little wonky on this screen, they're not quite as funky looking as that. But this guy moved into that house, he sold that house to these people. So, you kind of get a sense of how these markets work. You know, when you've got multiple transactions, dominoes the trip, so you, with 15, there were 66 homes. With 15 upsizers and downsizers, that takes it up to 81. And then you take two or three or four legs on those transactions, that gets you close to 100 homes came on the market and provided housing in our community because of this project. And I think we all understand that, that when people own a home, they're more likely to stay in a community. They're more likely, they send their kids to our schools, they buy cars, furniture, groceries, go to restaurants, that kind of thing. So, homeownership is important to stabilize a workforce and workforce is one of our biggest challenges in our community. I put this up here, that's a picture of what it was in 2019 or 2020, that's what that site looked like. That's what it looks like in May of this year. Pretty significant difference and it all happened because of the RHID. And you remember that number, that's what was being collected in property tax on that property in 2020. 127 bucks, split between the county, the school district, and the city. Because of that RHID, a lot more dollars have come in, significant economic impact and impact to our community that I think are hard to even measure in terms of dollars and cents when you think about young people having an option for housing, maybe stay in the community versus don't or people who take jobs. I can't tell you how many times I've heard from employers who have tried to hire somebody or have hired somebody. They come here, they look around for housing, they say, hey, we can't find adequate housing for our family, we're not going to move here. This kind of project is what it takes to try and make sure that doesn't happen. And it doesn't happen without an RHID. Heart of America would not have done this without an RHID, so we'd still probably be looking at that vacant lot. You never know for sure, but I know there's a, there's a project about a half a block to the south of that that was platted in 1997, still sitting there, platted, nothing on it. This was platted in, I think, 2001 and it's now got 66 houses on it, soon to be another 101 over the next five years. So, the RHID made a huge difference in making that happen. I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any thoughts.
Out of the six houses that are being built in phase three, are them all spoken for yet?
They are, sold before they ever came out of the ground.
How many houses are on the market right now, any idea Doug?
I think 50 or 60, Adam would.
74.
74, we're climbing up, 74. I'm an old timer, I used to be in the real estate business and I can remember when there were 200-plus houses on this market. So, we are still at an imbalance, we don't have enough inventory, particularly in certain price ranges at this point in time. And these are clearly in the right price range and everybody likes new. But I think the important thing is to remember those dominoes that come because of these homes.
How long do these RHIDs usually go?
Anywhere from, you know, they can go as long as 25 years, that's what the statute allows for. They typically, I've seen them as short as 15, sometimes into the 20s. Most of them pay out ahead of time, some of them won't pay out, you know, just based on the amount of increment that can be gotten. You know, as an example, I think Michael Graham's RHID and his apartments down on South Fort Street. I'm not sure he can get enough increment over the period of time to pay it out, but it does offset his development cost to the point where it was critical for him to do it.
My comments only, just to clarify, RHID is essentially just kind of a gamble that you're, that something's, whether something develops or not, you think it's going to, but with an RHID, what you're gambling is that it'll develop quicker this way, so that way, by the time you collect the taxes like the 127, if it took 10 years, you're collecting a thousand dollars, whereas if it develops quicker or if it developed within a couple of years without the RHID, then you would be collecting those taxes immediately. But that's the gamble that it likely would not be developed within 10 years or 15 or 25.
That's correct, you're betting one way or the other, that if you don't go with an RHID, you're betting that somebody's going to do it anyway. And, you know, most incentives are supposed to be that way, you know, but for the incentive, they're not going to do it. And so, you know, and there is an incremental cost to the county, to the city with an RHID. You do have to provide, in this case, the city has to provide fire protection, they have to provide police protection. They have to fix that road if something happens to it, you know, unlikely being a new road that they're going to have to do much to it in the next 20 years until it pays off. But they might, so there is a small incremental cost of having that there and having to provide those services that they're not getting reimbursed for. EMS is going to show up there if somebody calls them. Now, I don't know for sure how EMS works, if there's a charge per call or whatever, but certainly you as a county provide that service and you're not collecting any property tax as a result of that. You've traded that in exchange for the benefits that come from the sales tax and the other economic impact and then the intangible kind of things of having housing in a community for people who want to move here, who people may want to retire here, I've had a number of retirees who have moved in that area as well. You know, what is that worth? It's hard to put a dollar value on that, but it's significant.
So, who really pays for the RHID? Is it just these homes or is it spread throughout all the homes and all the properties?
I would say in a philosophical sense, you're taking the cost of that and spreading it across the community at large. If you look at who's paying for it. But they're paying, you know, again, Nathan, it's that gamble of would it have happened anyway? If it would have happened anyway, sitting where you're sitting, you should never do it. Because the best thing to grow the tax base and that kind of thing is to put those on the tax rolls immediately and start collecting property tax that you keep immediately. And I think one thing that's important to note, these people are still paying property taxes, just like you and I do. It's just where that property tax is going is the difference. This is going back to the developer until such time as they get their dollars back. As opposed to, if there were special assessments, those dollars would be going into your treasury right away. The homeowners would be paying another, I calculated up a couple hundred bucks a month in special assessments, which means that from an effective standpoint, that borrows about $30,000, a couple hundred dollars a month at today's rates. So, they're in effect buying that house for $30,000 less because it doesn't have specials on it. So, I'm not sure I answered your question, but.
Well, let me follow up, so you've explained RHID and somewhat on specials, we've had both in the community. Which has been more successful in your eyes?
I.
Because we have developments that are developed under specials and have been fully built out.
Yeah.
And now we're moving towards an RHID. So, for the tax, for the taxpayers, what is the better option?
I've got a comment that I think it depends on the development.
Would you step up, go ahead and introduce yourself.
You're good. Adam Prey, I'm a developer, I think to answer your question, Nathan, it depends on development. There are certain developments that, we did one on Prey Drive, we didn't need anything. No specials, no RHID, RHID, and it worked out fine. The new development we're proposing, we would never develop that piece without an RHID. If we use specials, the price of the lots would be too high, we wouldn't sell it. I would literally lose money. And there's several developments I can tell you about that have lost money that didn't do use subsidies. I don't think you'll see those two developing. So, I think some of the consequences, if you want a developer to continue to develop, they either, if they can do specials, I actually think that would be a better way in some cases depending on development. We have one now, a development that's going on that is choosing to use specials over an RHID. So, depending on the development and the location would be the answer that I would say to that.
Thank you.
I think it also depends on what you want. The problem is the cost of development has risen so high, it has outrun people's ability to afford. As an example, the one Adam's talking about in Northwest Hayes is 30 lot development. The initial engineer's estimate for the infrastructure for that's $2.9 million. You do the math on that and they're going to put it on specials, going to be about 450 bucks a month for specials on those lots. I think that seriously inhibits how quickly you're going to build houses. So, if housing is important to you, specials slow it down. But I don't disagree with Adam, I'm not saying it's a cure-all for everything. I think each project needs to be looked at on its own merit. But I, there's a reason why we're seeing them almost exclusive, most of the developments statewide are almost exclusively RHIDs. And it's because of the cost of development and trying to keep housing within an affordable range, whatever that is. More affordable than it would be without the RHID.
That's a tougher question I have on, because looking at the per lot, that seems to be the biggest determinant factor is the price of those lots going up. And where you're able to with the Heart of America to buy them at such a cheaper rate, and I guess it seems like why didn't that help drive lot prices down? Because you're essentially being able to develop it because you're getting that lot price so much cheaper than you normally would.
Talking about land cost, are you talking about?
Yeah, I mean, your per lot went from 35, 44 to 90 and you were able to get them for 10, 15, or 25. And typically, you introduce something into the market that's buying. for 10, 15, or 25, and typically, you introduce something into the market that's buying it much cheaper. That would force me, if I'm a landowner over here, saying, if I want to develop this, I got to drive my prices down for my lots, but it didn't seem to, that didn't seem to happen in the market, that lot prices continue to go up.
They did. For one, private developers are profit-driven, so they need to make a little bit of profit on it, but I, I think the other is supply and demand. I mean, it's not like we have a lot of lots available. I mean, right now, if somebody wanted to build a house in Hayes, there's no place to build it. In Victoria, Golden Belt has finished out, I think, 11 lots, and they've got nine of them sold already. So it's, it's supply and demand is part of the problem, and then, Heart of America's willingness to sell these lots, which were basically 30 to $35,000 lots, for $10,000 each, to try and get a price point of construction that would be lower. Not sure I answered your question either, but...
I guess, I'll kind of follow up on that. It's a, they may be a not-for-profit, but they're a not-for-loss either. So, is the RHID providing that balance to get them in, in check?
It, it is. We had a little twist here, which I didn't talk about, but, you know, we know right now what the RHID is going to produce in revenue on an annual basis. Know pretty much what the mill levy is, we know what, we know what the assessed value of those houses are. So, we know going forward. And at the end of this project, Heart of America said, we're done. We, we can't, we've exhausted our resources, and this is one of the problems with an RHID, that we've exhausted our resources, we're not going to go borrow money at the bank at nine and a half percent, and put in another $6 million worth of infrastructure. We just can't. And that's where we approached the city, and asked if they would consider bonding the existing revenue stream that Heart of America had developed, in exchange for Heart of America moving forward with the next development. And that's what we did. So the city gave Heart of America a check for two and a half million dollars, under the condition that they would develop the next 100 lots, and the city could do so, because they knew very well that that revenue stream was going to amortize those bonds over a 15-year period of time, or whatever it is, and it all works, hasn't, the, the city will, the revenues from the RHID will exceed the bond payments, and the projection is they'll pay out in about 2040. So, that is one of the challenges with an RHID. No developer wants to wait 25 years to get their dollars out to go on to the next development. And so, that's, that's a challenge, but it, it has worked very well for Heart of America. They, they're a little bit cash flow positive on this project, gives them some additional dollars to invest in the next one. But they're not, selling those lots to the builders for 10,000, 15, and 25, was certainly not a money-making endeavor. They just wanted to get their money back, so they could go on to the next deal. Anything else?
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Nine, then Planning Commission Appointment, Justin Craig.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Craig, Environmental Services Director. The Joint Planning Commission currently has one vacancy. We've been seeking applicants, interested volunteers to apply for the vacant position, which expires on June 30th of 2026. Currently, we have three applicants, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize those three gentlemen, Paul Drilling, Gerald Mermes, and Dave Van Dorn, and thank them for being willing to volunteer their time for that. So at this point, we're just asking the Ellis County Commission to appoint a member prior to our next meeting.
I have no, I mean, we have three willing candidates, so...
I thought of this, it kind of reminded me of when people had the same votes, and, you know, with Bobby, with the clerk, that to show no favoritism, I thought, put them all in a hat, and somebody draw a name, and be done. I'm glad that we had three applicants, I wish we could take all of them right away, but they'll be opening again, so that's just my opinion, to be fair.
I'm fine with that. I hadn't thought of that, but now you say it, I think that works well. I wasn't sure how we're going to pick between the three. I don't, I know one of them a little bit, but they all, just looking at their quick applications, are all involved, I think they'd all serve well. So, if that's a, I guess I'll ask the attorney, if that's a...
Gill Jeter County Councilor, absolutely a way to do it.
Okay.
So, that's, that's a decision that you make as Commissioner.
I'll give you three pieces of paper, names, and I don't have a hat.
You've got a hat up there, I guess.
Oh, you've got a hat.
The actual way we do it.
We'll get three names on here.
While we're doing that, Justin, did you have any comments on any of the three? Is there any reason to publicly...
No, I don't have a preference between the three. Happy to have three.
Like I'm at a party. Michael, you're going to draw one, take it.
I got one or two there.
You got one.
Yeah, I drew Gerald Mermes, so I'll move to appoint Gerald Mermes to the Joint Planning Commission to serve the remainder of the vacated term, effective immediately and expiring June 30th, 2026.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second nomination, any further discussion on that? Neil, good idea, I made it easy on us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Yes, thank to all three, that sometimes it's hard to get people to volunteer, so again, all three, and if we have vacancies come up on that board, I think we have a couple good candidates that we can reach out directly to, and try to fill those at some later date, so, thank you. Ellis County Library, so we do have a vacancy. Speaking of vacancies, volunteers, give a quick update on that.
Sure. Darren Myers County Administrator. The Ellis County Library Board has one member, whose term originally expired in April of 2026, has moved out of the county to go to college, which opens up a vacancy, which he's going to fill until the end of September 25 here. So as of October 1st, we would have a vacancy on the, on the board. We've had this on the agenda, I think, once before, about a month or so ago. We do have one citizen interest form that's been filled out, but this is just kind of a, another reminder, if anybody watching, or word of mouth, or if the Commissioners have anybody that may be interested in filling that term, that will be vacated October 1st, to go on the Ellis County website, under the citizen interest form, which is on the county clerk's page. Fill that out, send it in, and we'll have it back on the September 16th commission agenda, hopefully with a couple community members that are interested, and kind of maybe go through the same process you just did with the Planning Commission, to pick and appoint somebody.
Thank you. Public Works Cold Storage Unit Heaters, Brendan McKay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brendan McKay, Ellis County Public Works Director. Before you use the request to approve purchase order, for the installation of gas unit heaters into our cold storage building, it's called cold storage, but it's not entirely cold storage, we do have two workspaces out there. One is for the bridge crew, where they assemble forms, and perform other activities in there. There one is a chemical storage area and refill point, for all of our roadside and county used chemicals. We found this past winter, with the change orders that were made to the building, the unit, the mini splits that are in there are not sufficient to keep the spaces from freezing. Did have a water line freeze in the one of the areas. We kept tripping breakers, trying to keep electric heaters in there, so we had to run propane heaters, not an ideal solution, so moving forward, we'd like to go with these gas unit heaters. There is gas already run out to the building, so there is a minimal cost to bring the gas line from the north end of the building to the south end, to our unit heater. We received two proposals from our RFP, and Glassman was a low bidder on it.
So we made the change order during our building process, and can you explain what we did during that process?
So we had an add, yes, we had an add alternate to include mini splits, to provide cooling. At the time of the change order, it was thought that those mini splits would be sufficient to keep the spaces above freezing in winter time, so that those gas unit heaters were pulled out, they're not sufficient, so unfortunately, we need to go back and do something.
At the time, was it, when we made that change order, was it questioned through our HVAC supplier that that would be, would suffice, or is this a decision that we came upon ourselves?
I believe the information we got from the supplier was that they would be sufficient.
You're testing, a couple years, looking back. I don't know if we actually, our conversations always went directly through Tesseract, which was the design engineer. If they went through, if they went down to Glassman, I don't know, I don't remember any direct communication, if Glassman would have said yes or no, being, they could have with Tesseract, I don't, I do not remember. But I, the original bids just did have the, these gas heaters in it, and then when we, there's a reduction to take them out, and for cost savings, to put the mini splits in. So, the mini splits weren't an option, but we chose to go that route to help have the AC for them to work in, in the summer times, as well as hopefully that they would pick up the heat that was needed in the winter, which, for the cold storage on the north side, for the noxious weed, it's not sufficient. So that was, I'll, I'll take the mistake on that one, that we pulled them out, and...
I mean, that's, that's all three of us here, we, we all voted for it, more than likely, so it's, it's, there's enough playing to go around. I guess we're just going to, are we going to pay for this out of the...
Same fund that we paid for the, the building out. Our, Mr. Burgess just asked me a couple weeks ago, what our initial cost, or our overall cost for that was. I don't remember the exact number we, we talked about, but our budget that we started with was $6 million for the building, and I believe we were at 5.928 million. So even with all the 15 change orders, we were still under the initial budget of what we had hoped to spend, which is good, but it doesn't offset asking to do this, but we were, that's just the building cost.
Okay.
And had that building probably been in the city limits, with some protection, the mini splits probably would have worked, but out there in the middle of nowhere, yeah.
We planted one tree, we're trying to make a tree break.
Well, it's just kind of goes back to trying to minimize, I mean, we, we tried to do stuff, and try and do it right the first time, but we're going back here a year later, so... Which I know there's, you can't plant for everything. With that, I'll move to approve PO 7929 to Glassman Corporation for the installation of two gas unit heaters.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second on the table, any further discussion on it?
I didn't look real close through there, I don't know if you guys have. Are these high-efficiency unit heaters, or are they 80%?
I believe so, so these are the ones that were specced out in the original drawing.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Younger also asked me if the bid for the second proposal is in there, which was reliable.
Reliable did not turn into a bid.
Or, I'm sorry, they looked, Central Consolidated was the second bid, but Commissioner Younger just asked if, if we could at least notate the price of the second. I should have done this beforehand, so I wasn't...
Is it not there in the minutes that were attached?
Yeah, 38.5, one more down.
It's getting close. Yeah, there you, there. So the low bid from Glassman was 28,000-ish, and Central Consolidated's bid was just over 30, 38,000? Sorry, it took me a second to...
That's all right.
Easier when the computer's right in front of you.
Yes, Reliable didn't come out and do the site inspection, I had many calls with them, but unfortunately, they did not submit a bid for us. We reached out to about five separate entities here within Ellis County for a bid, and Glassman was the only one that came back to turn one in.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passes 3-0.
Thank you.
High-risk rural road grant agreement.
So this one, there's two of them in there, because we got both agreements before we had our next commission meeting, so that's doing two separate items, like we've done the past, a couple weeks apart, we're just going to prefer to do them both right now. The first agreement is for the construction engineering, it's the inspection of this high-risk rural road grant project. It's called the cost plus net CE agreement, and then there's the authority to award the contract, because the project was bid, bids were opened on the 20th of August, and the state has selected a candidate for that, they would like us to approve that candidate selection. So Kirk and Michael has done the majority of the work on this project with us, helping us apply for this grant, and doing the planning of it. They ran, when we did that, we did a RFP for the design and inspection. Kirk and Michael ranked the highest on that, so we, the time we did a dual agreement with them. This is just a follow-up on that one. And then the other one is the authority to award contract with, trying to remember that exact name, Seahawk. They were the lowest responsible bidder for the KDOT bid for the project, and they've done work here in Ellis County recently, especially for the city of Hayes, and they were considerably less expensive than others, and we've only heard good work from them. They recently bought out another company, are trying to expand west.
With that...
This project is for signing, verifying all the locations, the no-passing zones, adding ones where we need them, and adding new stripes, striping to the roadways, nearly all of the paved roadways in Ellis County. So it's nearly $750,000 worth of grant funds, that if the commission approves these two documents, we can get started on. Are there any questions on the agreements?
I'll move to, that the commission accept and sign the agreement for federal aid construction engineering inspection services by consultant, cost plus net fee CE agreement.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion, clarifications, or anything? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passes 3-0.
Okay. Then I'll move to, that the commission accept and sign the authority to award contract commitment of county funds for project 026C-5261-01.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, any questions or clarification on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passes 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Brendan, while you're still up there, in regards to painting, striping, signing roads, our recently renovated roads of Commerce and Vineyard Road, have you done any traffic studies, or have any plans to do a traffic study for our engineering for signage?
Yeah, regarding to the speed limits on it?
Yes.
Not yet. I can, if the commission would like, with the number of outages on that roadway, I strongly suspect they're going to come back with 55 mile an hour being the recommended posting. If the commission would like me to reach out to a firm to do that, I can, there'll be a cost for it, it'll be a couple thousand dollars, but...
I mean, I think we discussed that when we initially started that project, and...
Yep.
That way, in case we need to do extra signing or something, stop signs, whatever have you.
Not to add on to it, but if we're doing one, I know the commission would, at a previous meeting, asked that 48th Street would also be considered at a higher speed limit, if a, at a future date you wanted to do a, a study, so maybe doing both of them at the same time, if the commission would like to.
Okay. I think that now would probably be an appropriate time to look into that, and go forward with that process, now that we have the road completed. I, I believe we're complete, aren't we?
Yes. Other than permission... Yes. Other than permanent striping. And then we are, and we are installing larger stop signs.
Okay.
At the intersection to try and help people remember to stop there.
Okay.
There's a minimum size, sign size, but you can go as big as you want. So we're putting, installing, instead of the thirty inch or thirty-six inch ones, we have purchased some four foot ones.
Were you gonna have any, like LED beacon or anything on them?
At this point in time, not yet.
Okay.
Is there some other striping that we're gonna do throughout the county coming up?
So that's what this High Risk Rural Road Grant was for. So if the contractor is unable to complete it this year, we will work with a different contractor to stripe what we had overlaid or sealed this year. That's why we've been, we need to finish up our ceiling asphalt work this year before we get the contractor here. And if they're unable to complete this project this year, we'll do it on our own.
Do you need a motion or just a consensus to move forward with?
I should be able to just, with your consensus, move forward, because it's within my authority to.
I'm good. I'm good if you want, would move forward with that, so we can get that project completed for both Forty-Eighth Street, Commerce and Vineyard.
Will do.
You good with that, Michael?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Substantial compliance reports. Eugene Rupp.
Morning Commissioners, Eugene Rupp, Ellis County Appraiser. Just reporting to you on the two thousand and twenty-four final ratio study and the two thousand and twenty-five procedural compliance and substantial compliance reports. The two thousand and twenty-four final ratio study, this is actually basically our report card for tax year two thousand and twenty-four. The first two lines are the, the lines that are actually relevant in this slide here. You see on our residential, our ratio is ninety-six point one two percent. The confidence interval, what the confidence interval means is that you basically, through the analysis of state, does they determine a, a high point and a low point? As long as you're within that confidence interval, you're determined to be in compliance with their standards. So the confidence interval was ninety-five to ninety-seven, we're at ninety-six, we're right in the middle of their confidence interval. The COD is the coefficient of dispersion. Basically, um, it's determines how far apart your points are. So the lower your COD, the better. It means you're, you're, if you had a scatter chart out here, and your points were all over the chart, your COD would be extremely high as a kind of, if you put a trend line in and your points come in closer to your line, your COD gets a little bit lower. So it's, it's a measure of uniformity. So a COD O seven is considered very good. Anything under twenty is considered in compliance with the state. So our, our coefficient of dispersion tells us that, that our values are, are right in line with where they should be. The PRD is also, it's the price related differential. It varies up and down from one. One is considered exactly where you should be. If you're a little bit higher or lower, it can mean that maybe your lower valued properties are a little over appraised, or your higher valued properties under appraised. So on our residential, again, we're at one right there, so that you, you can't get better than that with your, with your, with your PRD. So kind of a summarizing in our residential, we're, we're at ninety-six percent. We have a really good COD and we have a really good PRD. So very confident with what we're doing on our residential valuations. I believe there was three hundred and two sales in that, in that set that they analyzed. On our commercial and industrial, our median ratio was seventy-nine point eight three. Interestingly enough, I want to bring up that last year we were at ninety-seven. So what I'll get to as you kind of go across that line, and you'll see again, our COD eleven point nine, well, under that twenty threshold. Our PRD is a little bit higher, but if you look at that far column over there where it says valid sales, there was only nine commercial sales that were used in this analysis from the state. So it only takes a single point or two within nine sales to really move those results up and down a little bit. I would honestly say from a, from a feeling aspect, our commercial ratio is a little bit higher than what you're seeing here from the state. They use a little bit different set of criteria to determine what's valid than we do internally. So last year we were at a ninety-seven, this year we're at a seventy-nine point eight. We are still considered in compliance for two thousand and twenty-four, but just kind of highlights how just that super small sale set, only nine valid sales. I could pull one sale out and put one sale in, and that number could change substantially. The rest of the subsets, while they are listed here, the state does not do any analysis on those. So residential, commercial are the only points that they analyze. And again, summarizing, this is for two thousand and twenty-four. As you get to the next slide, before I move on, any questions on this? As we get to the, the next several documents, we are required, and I believe the state actually sends it to the commission as well. Basically, our substantial compliance, this is basically our report card that says we have what our grades are on all the different points throughout the year. And this is actually for tax year two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, there is a whole lot of documents here. I'm not gonna actually go through them all, except to summarize and say that we hit one hundred percent on those. So there is not a single point that the state looks at that we did not accomplish what we were supposed to do in two thousand and twenty-five. So kudos to my staff. This is not something that I do on my own. This is a team effort. So we appreciate the, the support we get from you to allow us to do the work that we do. And I think it shows in, in our performance here, so. Any questions?
Kudos to you and your staff.
Well, like you, I said, there, there is a lot of information, but just to summarize and say that we've hit a hundred percent on them all, I think just explains it all.
That's great. Thank you to you and, you and your staff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Rescue fifty uplifting.
Last item on the agenda is to consider the approval of a replacement of a fire truck chassis. This is a two thousand and twenty-six planned expenditure. The order bank for the two thousand and twenty-six model F five fifty chassis are open now. Uh, so if the commission were to approve this project, basically, the truck would be ordered, wouldn't be delivered until approximately estimated January of two thousand and twenty-six, at that point of which it would then become a part of the fleet program and be paid for at that time. The, the, the purchase order is actually, that's attached to this agenda item, is actually for the upfitting, which what that does is takes the body off the current chassis, does some minor body modifications, because it's going on a chassis that's twenty years newer. Some lights. I've listed several things on the agenda that are part of that, that roughly twenty-five thousand dollar PO. The lights, changing some compartment modifications, some seats, the, removing the foam, foam system and some compartment modifications, et cetera. Uh, that's what the, that's what the actual PO is for, is the, the labor to take the chi, the body off the chassis, put it on the new chassis when it arrives in January. And approving it now in September, I said August, allows the company to order all the materials and equipment in advance. So that way, when the chassis gets here in January, we can deliver the old one, and they can do all the work with all the equipment there in place. Um, this is the, I believe it's a two thousand and six model year, uh, F five sixty. It's got almost ninety thousand miles. It is the number one used fleet in the apparatus. It has also the most mileage out of all fire trucks in, in our fleet as well. So this is a needed purchase. And it's also, by using this, takes more miles off the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar fire trucks, uh, because this puts the, the miles on the, on the smaller, smaller F five fifty chassis than a full-size fire truck. So they use this on all motor vehicle accidents and medical emergencies in centrally the central part of the county from Yosemite East and Tulon West, all the way to the North County line and all the way down to about Antonino Road. Any questions? I guess also for budget purposes, I scrolled down enough. It, we did have thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this expenditure in twenty-six, so it did come in under budget, which is great, considering the, the funds and the dollars amount.
All move to approve PO number seven nine three seven to Hayes Fire and Rescue to upfit a new five, F five fifty rescue chassis for the County Fire Department.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second on the table. Any further discussion?
I would just like to make the comment with Mr. Doug Williams, how he had that whole list of different contractors, different people that this affects. Here it is again. One of our local people will set this truck up for us, help us, keeps our business right here, keeps the economy rolling. So, yeah, that's important, so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed passes three zero. Administrator report?
Uh, just a quick update on the admin building and a reminder. Next meeting for the Ellis County Commission is next week, Tuesday, September ninth. Uh, the basement of the admin center is still under repairs. They have started sheet rocking, and most of the basement has been sheet rocked, and they're hopefully getting in with mud and tape this week. September ninth is the R and R budget hearing, which, based on statute publications and the R and R hearings and everything has been mailed out. So our county commission meetings will be held back in the regular commission chambers next week. We're gonna try the best with a temporary solution for recording. Not maybe live feeding, but they will be working on that this week. We'll have folding chairs in there, so we'll have the meeting back in the appropriate location. And then on September sixteenth, it most likely still will not be done, but that is the RHID hearing for Southwest, Southeast Hayes. Um, so we'll just set up the folding chairs and everything back in the room. So that way, that, that public hearing can still go on as scheduled. And the September twenty-third is the date that the commission has picked to have a work session. Um, so we'll talk about that at a future commission agenda to get those items finalized and select a location for that meeting. That's more appropriate for an actual work session meeting. So that's kind of what the rest of September looks like. So just a reminder to the public that it's being remodeled, apologize for the mess and the, we'll kind of coordinate off down there, so that way the, the traveling public doesn't get into the construction area zone and get, get confused down there. So that's all I got.
Neil?
Yes, I did go to the ribbon cutting for the new community center. One of them sitting in here that kind of got an emotional and, but those, those were tears of joy. So did our mayor of Hayes. Very good. Much needed. It was well attended. I was happy to see some of our staff there also. Um, and I do want to thank the city again for letting us beg, borrow this for meetings and, and did go to Hayes Chamber luncheon, and the topic was united way. So if anybody has some spare money around, a little bit for everybody goes a long way. So. All I have.
Really have no report. I, I have had a number of conversations with people concerned over the taxes and the budget going up. So I expect to see some people there next, next week. However, I, I did reiterate to them, really the time for changes was a month ago. And next week is more or less a formality. So unless we really want to make Darren's life miserable.
Uh, I attended the ribbon cutting as well, the Bob, Bob and Paschmidt Community Center. Kind of the same takeaway. I, I remember a five or six years ago, there was a few of us that kind of got together and just drawing ideas and what we could see. Through those conversations, it, it takes conversations like that to see something in the community at large that was there. Every person that was there, I think, had some sort of input, whether that's just being a part of the conversation, or part of the funding, or part of the development. It was really, really great to see a community effort come to fruition. And those are the kind of things, they, they really truly just don't pop up out of the ground. So when people complain about things don't happen in this community, that you gotta realize it takes five, six, seven years for things to actually develop. And then you see something like that, and it's truly, truly meaningful. Revenue neutral hearings tomorrow. I'll just as a reminder, Ellis County Library will hold their revenue neutral hearing at five thirty at the Hayes Public Library there. Um, and then next week, I will not be in person, but I will be calling in. So for just general public knowledge, I'll be, I'll be attending the meeting via phone. Um, I booked vacation clear back in December, so I'll be out of town, but I do plan to call in and be a part of it. But for any question of why I'm not there. No executive session, so I'll call the meeting at nine thirty-six.